I'd like to call the April 12, 2012, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Pons.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Mr. Friling.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Our first order of business today is approval of council minutes from the meetings of March 5 and March 8, 2012, the March 7, 2012 joint meeting of the School Board, Board of Supervisors, City Council, and the budget work sessions of March 19, 20, 2012. Do I have any -- Joe, should we do this all in -- may we do this all in one or should we do them separate?
You may do them all in one.
Okay. Do I have any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the City Council minutes for the March 5 and March 8, 2012 meetings, the March 7, 2012 joint meeting with the School Board and the Board of Supervisors and City Council, and the budget work sessions of March 19 and 20, 2012.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Our next order of business is a matter of special privilege, and this is one of those times that we really take a few minutes to recognize one of our own, and this is an important award because it comes from their peers in the city staff. And I think I would like to ask Mike Lesniak to please come forward. This is an excellence in service to Williamsburg presentation. So, Mike, if you'd join me at the microphone here. Congratulations. Thank you. I have a citation to read that talks about all your virtues, and then we have a little plaque for you, and then you can have a minute to say something. This is the award. "The City of Williamsburg takes pleasure in recognizing Michael Lesniak for excellence in service to Williamsburg. Mike Lesniak has faithfully and effectively served the City of Williamsburg for over 20 years. As vehicle maintenance supervisor in the Public Works Department, he is responsible for the maintenance and readiness of the city's fleet of 92 vehicles, including large equipment such as backhoes, street sweeper, sewer flusher, leaf machines, snow plows, asphalt roller, plus all of the small machinery, including lawn mowers, hedgers, chainsaws, and pumps. Mike initiated a vehicle maintenance work order program, which also keeps track of the parts inventory. He takes the primary role in the maintenance of police and fire vehicles and apparatus." Along with his responsibilities as a vehicle maintenance supervisor, Mike serves on the Environmental Management System EMS team for the Public Works Department. As a key player on the EMS team, Williamsburg was one of the first localities to receive Virginia's Department of Environmental Quality E4 designation. Mike is known as someone who is quick to jump in and get the job done using his mechanical skills and innovation. His judgment and expertise are highly valued by all employees who rely on city vehicles and equipment to accomplish their jobs. Mike Lesniak is hereby recognized for his dedication to excellence in keeping with the best traditions of public service in the City of Williamsburg dated today, April 12, 2012, and signed by me as mayor and Jack Tuttle as city manager. Mike, congratulations.
Thank you.
We also have a plaque for you all in your office, shop, or wherever you would like to put it. Mike, congratulations, and again, this is an award that's particularly important because, again, your peers have recognized you for all you do for them and for the city and our citizens. If you'd like to say something.
Well, I'm not good at words, but I would just say it's been a great honor for the 20 years I've been here. I've really enjoyed it, and I hope the next 10, 20, however long I'm here is just as always what I've had now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Congratulations. Our next order of business is background presentations. I don't believe we have any today, so that's correct. That moves us to our public hearings, and today we have two public hearings. The first is on the budget, and the second is on the sale of the city's undivided interest in the Recreation Center property. Let's go to the first, the budget hearing, and this is for the budget adoption scheduled for May 10. And we have both the operating and capital budgets for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2012, and proposed water rates of $4.55 per thousand gallons. Jack, would you like to?
Yes, just by way of introduction, and we can go ahead and put the slide up. Boyd Park. Formal notice was given of today's public hearing as required -- thank you -- by the Virginia's process for doing this sort of thing. And in that ad that went in the paper, these were the numbers which were published. This is the proposed or the informative budget only. It's not the final budget to be adopted by City Council a month from now, but it shows the total amount, and then the ad also breaks this down by groups, both on the revenue side, and expenditures in four funds. The general fund operations, which is the largest fund of the city, our utility fund, which takes care of water and sewer, capital improvement funds for long-term capital investment, and the smaller public assistance fund, which brings together federal, state, and local funding for human services. Those four funds are supported by a number of taxes and fees. Of those that are included in the ad, the three listed on the slide are three where there is proposed to be in the proposed budget, a change in local tax levies, and that would be for real estate tax from the current $0.54 per $100 of assessed value to $0.57. For personal property, from $3.50 currently to $4.00 for $100 of assessed value. And for cigarettes, an increase from $0.25 to $0.30 per pack. Also, the budget in the utility fund includes a recommendation for an increase from the current water rate of $4.30 to $4.55. So, that is a very basic overview. Be happy to answer any questions, but now I think we're ready to go to the hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. And again, we've had numerous meetings discussing this, including the two budget work sessions on March 19 and March 20, and the work session earlier this week. Are there any questions for Jack at this point before I open the hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to address the issue of the budget for next year, both operating and capital budgets for the fiscal year commencing July 1, and for the proposed water rate of $4.55. If anyone wishes to address the budget, please come forward. I have one speaker's card, and that's Kira Cook. If you wish, please come forward, state your name and address.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of City Council. My name is Kira Cook, and my address is 315 Penniman Road. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this afternoon. I have a few comments about the city manager's budget, which I do support. First and foremost, I'm grateful for the city's dedication to funding public education for the inclusion of increased support in this year's budget, especially in these difficult times. As a parent of children in the division right now, I'm particularly grateful for that. The partnership we have with James City County is a valuable one, and I appreciate the city's role in keeping that relationship sound. I also support the allocation in the budget that supports our major educational and cultural institution, Colonial Williamsburg. Colonial Williamsburg and William &amp; Mary are our economic drivers and the reason for our exceptional quality of life. Supporting Colonial Williamsburg so that it can leverage city funds to stay strong is a wise investment on the city's part. I only hope that as things improve, as the economy improves, we can look at ways to support both Colonial Williamsburg and William &amp; Mary with the understanding that when they thrive, so too do we. And that's any such investment of public dollars are returned multiple times over via tax revenues. Additionally, I support city funds to fund the Greater Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance to promote visitation in Williamsburg. The alliance is well-positioned and has the capacity to simultaneously work with major tourism drivers and to think about the big picture while also being inclusive of small business and carrying out the work of getting people to shop, dine, and sleep here. Regarding the recommended tax increases, I support them. In my mind, this is an issue of context over content. I'm reluctant to look at any tax increase in the vacuum without first considering the context in which it is proposed. Given the city's exceptionally low comparative tax rates, and given that this is the first time our city manager has recommended a tax increase of this nature, and keeping in mind that the fact that the city's services are exemplary at a minimum, if a tax increase is not acceptable at this point in time, I wonder, if not now, when? And what does it mean in the long term for our residents? Thank you very much for your consideration and also for your dedication to our community. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Kira. Anyone else wish to address the issue of the budget? If so, please come forward, state your name and address.
I apologize for not filling out a card. I forgot my pen. I was here on Monday as well, and I just want to reiterate my concern about the cigarette tax. My name is Dave Arndtore with Fast Mark Convenience Stores. In addition to what I said the other day, I did a little more research, and I looked at some of the numbers, and the taxes on cigarettes right now are about -- well, they're $1.51 with everything included, a pack. If another nickel comes on, they'll be $1.56. We make about $0.30 a carton on cigarettes, and the carrying cost for a carton of cigarettes is around $40. And so, our inventory on cigarettes every day is around $30,000 to $40,000, depending on how the week goes. We just don't make a lot of money. And what I'm saying is these taxes, one store that we have, we pay you about $10,000 in cigarette taxes a month, and that will go up to about $12,000 -- or not a month, a year, I'm sorry. And that'll go up to about $12,000 a year. So, I was also looking at the profitability of this store, and we have about 208 stores, 209 stores right now, I believe. And so, this is, you know, we have a couple stores here in Williamsburg, so it's a small percentage of our stores, but these stores are on the bottom. And so far this year, we've lost money at both of these locations, and in big part because of this tax we're paying, and the disadvantage when you go a mile down the street to our competition outside the city. And so, I understand, and I like that we're funding education, and I understand taxes. We have a big federal tax on cigarettes. When we go to these city taxes, it makes it really unfair for your retailers and your citizens inside the city to really make it. I don't know if those stores are going to be here next year. They're certainly on our target list. So, and I'm sure there are some other retailers, maybe not here today, that sell cigarettes that are in the same boat. So, I just want to reemphasize to you all, we might not be here next year if this passes. It's just going to get worse, and it's a precedence that you set when you do this. And yeah, there are some communities, there are some cities in Virginia that do this. There are a few, and we've moved out of a few of those cities. And we've located outside the city, just outside the city. It's been done. Could be done again. So, I just wanted to make that point to you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody, anyone else wish to address the budget during the budget hearing? If not, I'll come back to -- I'll close the hearing and come back to council for any questions, discussion. We pretty much talked.
Maybe I'm trying to find what the projected increase in revenue from the increase in cigarette tax is. What's that dollar amount? Do you have that?
Yes, I have it here, and I'll look and feel remembers on top of this page.
About $30,000?
$30,000.
Yeah. It's a cautionary tale that we just heard. You know, as a non-smoker, it's easy for me to say, "Meh, tax cigarettes," but the unintended consequence is, was just described. Businesses, you know, may leave the city. I had a conversation with another merchant on Richmond Road who echoed some of those same thoughts, and what he sees as cigarette tax goes up, visitation to the store goes down, and so residual spending also goes down. There's less gas bought, less, you know, hot dogs and potato chips and various other things. And so, I wonder if there's an effect, you know, in going after that $30,000 just in cigarette tax, will we lose more than that in residual revenues from other spending? So, I just think we ought to be mindful of that as we move forward.
I think that and the differential impact of personal property on individuals, the personal property tax on individuals versus businesses, because individuals get some relief through the so-called car tax relief, businesses do not get that same relief, that those are two taxes that I think we need to think about very critically before we go forward with and make a decision next month about those. Any other issues that -- okay. This doesn't take any action at this point?
No, it's the public hearing only today, and we will not only come back to you next month, but as we get more information on several of the still-evolving issues with the state that you're all aware of, we'll bring that to you as well.
Could you just give us a quick recap of what those specific moving parts are still?
Right. The major one is the Virginia retirement system, the changes which are likely to come out of the General Assembly. We still have the veto session later this month, and what that will mean in terms of taking contributions that the city is now making to the retirement system, and shifting those to the employee, and how that's handled, and a number of different options, and other ancillary issues with that, such as increasing costs to constitutional officers in jail because of that same movement. So, that whole VRS package. Another piece is we're continuing to work on our health care package for next year, and that could have some impact on our budget, where I'm hoping positive compared to what is in the proposed budget, but that is still at play. Then we're continuing to look at the tax estimates that were discussed on Monday and to see if there's anything else on the revenue side that can be refined further over the next, over the next several weeks. So, we're going to package all that together and give you essentially a breakdown of the pluses and minuses as we see it, and also the options, particularly with regard to VRS, so that when you come back together in your first meeting in May, you'll be able to make a decision which way to go.
And two other variables that seem to be in there are the ratification of the school contract?
Yes, we are. This budget is under the assumption that what you have in the contract before you will hold substantially, and we'll talk about that when we get to it, but that certainly is not totally resolved yet.
And then the county's decision on contribution, which will drive our school contribution?
Yes, I would not, that would, that could reduce costs rather than increase costs because our budget is based on the school's adopted budget right now, and so that could change marginally in our case if the county made a change, yes.
And the scheduled date for the county to adopt their budget, it comes out Friday, I believe tomorrow?
It's out, yes, very soon, and I believe they're also in May in the same timeframe as ours.
Question. Does that hold true for the library, too? Is there any danger that the county's going to look at the library contract?
We've not heard that at this point, but obviously both, if the county's -- the way the library contract says that neither locality will reduce its funding, so that and ours is, we had a little bit of increase due to some increased utilization, city versus county, but I don't see, I don't see much of a change there, even if the county were to cut.
Does the VRS, do the VRS changes affect the library as well, and could that affect their budget? So, it's not only the schools, it's the library, it's anybody that has employees that are part of VRS that could come back?
And of course, that, yes, it could, it could affect their budget, but in our case, it's just a small piece of it. So, we'll put --
As we found out, every dollar counts, right? Okay. Any further questions and discussion? And again, I think it's critical to be aware that this budget is a movable feast. There are many parts still being adjusted, and that hopefully by May, they will all fall into place, and we'll have a clearer picture of where we are. Okay, thank you. Our next public hearing is a public hearing regarding the sale of the city's undivided interest in the recreational center property to James City County. Jack, would you?
Yes, the information we provided to you with the agenda tells the history, and if we go to the, I've got it here. There we go. Tells the history of the site, which is owned by, jointly by the city and the county, which is this property on which sits the James City County Williamsburg Rec. Center and Ballfields. The property was deeded from the Commonwealth of Virginia as surplus eastern state property back in the 1980s when this road was constructed, and so this property went to the localities for the purpose of constructing recreation facilities. So, ever since it has come over, the property has been jointly deeded. Back in the late 1980s, the city agreed to pay 25% up to a cap of the initial improvements, the very first work that was done on the Rec. Center. It was anticipated at that time that it might operate as a joint facility, but the city has never participated in any operating costs. It's always been a 100% county operation, and there have been substantial additions to the facility and the development of more parking and ballfields. All of that has been done entirely at county expense. The city has put its recreational money into QuarterPath and Waller Mill and other facilities in the city over the last 20 years. So, that's the history. Several years ago, in fact, the joint ownership was never had been an issue in all of that time. However, several years ago, the county located, right about here, as a matter of fact, a cell tower on the site. And at that time, we went and said, "This is the first time that the property is being used for a non-recreational purpose, since the city is a joint owner of the underlying fee, that we should participate in any revenues that are being generated off the property." The county wasn't excited about that proposal, and so began a discussion on how we should look in the long term for a facility which is a 100% county facility, and whether this joint ownership was a good thing over the long haul. And so, out of that came an agreement that you had before you where the city would, the city right now owes the county $216,000, going back to the purchase of property for the most recent middle school and elementary school in the school system. And that bill hadn't, has never been paid, and partly because this discussion was going on. So, we owe the county that amount of cash. So, the idea was to transfer the fee ownership, our half-interest in this property, to James City County, and in exchange for that $216,000 payment. But also, we proposed that, this is Long Hill Woods, the city limit line is right here, and so there's a city neighborhood in this area. The proposal was that there would be a 50-foot no-build buffer, currently the ballfields extend right to that edge, that would be agreed to in the transfer of 100% interest in the property to the county, and that there'd be further, an additional 100 feet where if any construction that the county wished to do in this area would come to the city, and the city would need to approve it in order for it to happen. Now, as it turns out, this piece of property is actually owned, not jointly by the city and the county, but 100% by the James City County Public Service Authority. So, and it's entirely wooded today, there's nothing on it except a trail that goes through it. So, it was provided that the buffer would extend all the way into this area, and so that these trees that are here, even if the county should decide to use this property for some purpose in the future, that it would preserve the 50-foot buffer here. And that's a good thing because this piece of property has never been part of the original larger land deal. So, that's how this thing has evolved and what we come to today. The county took this up at their board at their last meeting and last month and approved the transaction, so it's being brought to you today for this purpose. And this is under public hearing because the city attorney has advised that because of the, that it's a permanent transfer of city ownership and property, that there needs to be a formal public hearing before council board takes action on it.
Great, thank you. Before I open the public hearing, are there any questions for the city manager?
Mr. Tuttle, would you mind elaborating on the cooperative parks and recreation relationship between the city and James City County? Because after this was first reported, there were concerns among some citizens that it would impact their usage of the Rec. Center. Can you talk a little bit about how the city operates QuarterPath and James City County operates their facilities?
Well, at the time this agreement was consummated back approximately 1990, at that time, what had been an informal agreement became a formal agreement that any city resident could use county facilities on the same basis as county residents, and any county residents could use city recreational facilities on the same basis as city residents. So, there is no distinction between a city-county resident in terms of the fees and the rules and so forth of using the recreational facilities or programs of either jurisdiction. And this has been important because the way it has worked out is each jurisdiction has specialized in certain recreational programming, which is available to both jurisdictions. So, for instance, the city does no soccer, nor do we do baseball in the city. The city, however, does softball, we do volleyball, we do basketball, and we have large programs for those that actually have many more county residents participate in them than city residents. So, both jurisdictions have benefited by that arrangement, and that does not change with this transfer of property. That agreement remains intact.
And so, the bottom line is city residents still have complete, full access to the recreation facilities on this piece of property?
That's correct.
Thanks.
And any other questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to address the issue of the sale of the city's undivided interest in the Recreation Center property to James City County, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the hearing and come back to council for discussion.
I'll start off by saying, I think that transfer of the property simplifies some things for both the city and the county. The 50-foot buffer is a good thing, or the 50-foot no-build buffer is a very good thing. The additional 100-foot buffer where there's conversation about what can be built is another benefit, and particularly when the 50-foot buffer extends down into a piece of property that isn't even part of this conversation, we're gaining a greater degree of protection for the residents of the Long Hill Woods neighborhood who are in between two somewhat significant facilities, and I think that protection is important, so. And it also helps the city with the debt to the county. So, from all those perspectives, I think it makes perfect sense.
This will completely eliminate that outstanding $216,000 bill?
Yes, we will not have to pay it.
Okay. Very good. I think it's a smart thing to do. I mean, if it helps clear up some outstanding issues, and the residents of both jurisdictions still have cross-use, and that relationship hasn't changed, I think it's fine.
Makes sense.
Yeah, and I think the buffer really is a big plus of this, too, as much, in some ways, as much as the $216,000.
Is there any restriction on the service authority's potential use for that? Can it be used for anything, or is?
This agreement does not speak to that. So, anything, if it's their property and anything they can legitimately use it for, does not change in this agreement, other than the buffer.
But their legitimate use, is that expansive?
Oh, that's a good question. I believe it is fairly expansive, yes. They can use it for any utility purpose that they would choose.
But that's not changing here. That's always been changing.
That's not, but that's why the buffer, the standard is that it's really critical.
Can I just say one other thing? Periodically hear people say about, "Oh, you know, you all don't work well with the surrounding jurisdictions, or, you know, you don't have enough cooperation." I think there's parks and recreation -- I think this parks and recreation is an incredibly beneficial arrangement for the residents of both localities and allows the municipalities to do things in a much more specialized way that we couldn't do independently. And I just think it's one of those things that often gets overlooked and is worth highlighting, and I hope it's the type of thing that we can continue to do on into the foreseeable future. Thankfully, people thought about this 20 years ago, and even before that, before it became formal.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
If not, I'll come back to council for action.
I move that city council approve the transaction and authorize the mayor to sign and deliver the deed to James City County, conditioned upon it being signed by appropriate officials in the county and James City Service Authority.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pond?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Frye?
Aye.
And as Paul said, this is one more measure of the cooperation that occurs between the jurisdictions. This is good. Our next order of business is reports. First is the monthly financial statements. Jack, is there anything in particular?
Yes, one thing. If you look on page six, you'll see at the bottom of the page is a summary of the city's long-term debt. And I've got a call on Tuesday from Jimmy Sanderson, who is with Davenport and Company. Davenport and Company has been the city's financial advisor for transactions over at least two decades. And Mr. Sanderson advised that they had been, as they do with all the people they work with, looking to see if there are refunding opportunities in the market that could save the localities' money on existing debt. And we have a fairly small outstanding debt. If you look at item number two, capital improvement, sales tax fund, issued date of 2005, the original issue amount was $8.5 million. On your sheet, it shows 5.6 remaining to go. Actually, another payment has been made as of April 1, and that is now 5.1 million. So just over $5 million outstanding on that 15-year bond issue, has another eight years to run. And as you can see, our current interest rate is 3.76%. 3.76% sounds like a pretty good interest rate, and it certainly was in 2005. However, rates right now are historically incredibly low. And in fact, it may well be possible to refund this $5 million, still over eight years, not adding anything to the length of term, and saving the city something around $20,000, $25,000 per year for the rest of the term, which will, of course, and that is net of the costs of doing a refunding of the issue. So that was interesting enough to me to say to Mr. Sanderson that I would brief you on that today and that, and ask him to, if you concur, to work this up in terms of what the cost would be, what the savings would be, and provide a resolution for you to look at next month to see if you would like to authorize an advanced refunding of this $5 million. And what it would say, the resolution would authorize it so long as the savings, and generally the way these things go, were at least 3% of the outstanding cost looking ahead. So there's a floor, so you simply don't want to do it and save a very small amount. But as long as it's sufficient enough and worthwhile, that the authority would be to go ahead and put that together. So again, no action today, but want to let you know that's what's been suggested to me and it sounds promising.
I think that's certainly worth pursuing.
Absolutely. And is whatever the resolution, you talked about the savings having to be 3%, and it takes into account that whatever the circumstances are when the resolution is passed might not be the circumstances.
Yes, yes.
However many months down the road it takes to accomplish it.
Right, and there is, there is a small window of some risk where there are some costs that are incurred, that if you don't go ahead, you still have to pay those costs, but they're relatively minor. And we'll talk about those details next month. So there is some risk in it, but it's modest and the gain, again, is substantial.
Smart.
Can we do it with the other ones?
Well, the other one was the 2010 bonds were, that was done and it now stands at 2.75%.
Right.
And the question, it's all a matter of how much?
Yeah.
And whether or not that, the rates right now are lower than 2.75, but they have to be sufficiently lower to make it justifiable, given the issuance costs.
Right.
And right now, that hasn't tripped over the 3% rule of thumb.
Well, I think you've got a consensus from council to.
To work on it.
Work on it.
Mr. Searle will be providing information to, and working on it.
Let's hope the window stays open for a while.
There you go, yep.
Anything else on the financial?
No, sir.
Okay. Next, monthly departmental operating reports, anything in particular, Jack?
Nothing in particular to point out.
Any questions?
No, sir.
If not, we'll move to city manager reports, and we have five of them this month. The first is the joint schools' five-year agreement between the city and James City County.
Yes, you have a joint memorandum by myself and Bob Midol, county administrator of James City County, recommending to you the changes in the current five-year school contract that would extend over the next five years from July 1 this year through to fiscal 2017. And just to summarize what those, the changes are, the first one, and probably the most significant in of any of the other features, is that currently the amount that the city pays and the county pays in any year for schools is driven by the ratio, the number of schoolchildren in the city versus the county in that year. And we look at the September 30 actual count and that drives who pays what for the next fiscal year. Some time ago, in the case of the regional jail partnership, the same methodology was used, each locality pays for the number of inmates that result from, that came from that locality and cases generated in that locality, but it's averaged over five years. And what that means is that if there is, if a large decrease or increase in any given year for a locality, by doing the five-year averaging, it's smoothed over time. Everybody still is going to pay eventually what they owe for their inmates in the jail, but the five-year averaging helps level it out, so there's not a shock to people's budgets, either on the plus side or on the negative side. So we thought that perhaps our school contract, leaving the formula and the system just as it has been, but putting this additional feature in would be good for both parties. And as you all are well aware, we experienced one of those shocks this year because we saw an over a 10% increase in schoolchildren in the city in one year. It's very anomalous, hadn't seen it before, but there it is. And that drove thinking that perhaps you're not always in steady state, particularly with the changes in where people live and as we've seen. So that's the major thing, is that we put in three-year averaging, and that does benefit the city, particularly in next year's budget, it softens out the cost shift impact and extends it over time. It still provides for the existing multiplier, this is a premium which the city pays to be in the joint system. We pay 14% more per child than the county pays per child. So it's a multiplier of 1.14 on top of the shared expense, and so that would extend under this recommendation for the next five years. And there's also a few other changes. One is to add some more categories. We have a list of children that for some reason are not in a permanent residence, that this has been in the contract for some time, since, for instance, a child who is in a juvenile detention center at the time the count is taken. That's not their permanent residence. So we take those children and we just set them aside and don't count them, plus or minus in the formula. And now the contract would provide that if we have children living in campgrounds or in a hotel room or in some other non-permanent housing, that again, that same principle would apply. It doesn't involve too many children, but it would exclude something like 15 children in the current year and take them out of the formula. And then finally, there's a provision in there which tightens up a bit on how we handle the unexpended year-end funds in the school budget and provides that those funds would then be re-appropriated to the schools in the next budget, as opposed to now, a portion of those funds can be retained by the schools. This was the issue that I understand two nights ago was discussed in James City County Board, and there was some disagreement on that provision. And so the board decided on Tuesday not to adopt this agreement, and I've just heard today that they believe they've worked that out and they're comfortable either with this or something very close to it. So, and then they'll take that up later this month. So my recommendation to you is that we adopt the agreement as presented here, and should the county wish to propose some change on that point, to be considered, that we do that as a subsequent matter and that we, at any rate, move the process forward. Because this is something that needs to get done. We both count on this, getting back to Mr. Frye's point earlier, we count on knowing this to be able to budget intelligently, and so I think it's important that the city and the county get this adopted.
Great, thank you, Jack. Yes, I have maybe two questions. First, the 14% premium, we have debated, but when I first came on council, I think it was probably close to a 0.2, and we've worked that down. And in part, the city gets a benefit because the children, our children are in a school system that provides a much wider range of curricular options and opportunities. The county gets an advantage because there are scale economies of having another 10% of children in the system. But it seems to me in our discussions, it also, when you take account of the amount of, the differential in the amount of money the state pays, the city versus the county, that the local contribution per child is pretty much the same or very close. Is that correct?
That's correct. We receive less money per child from the state than the county does, under the state's allocation formula. So in effect, this 14% additional amount the city pays makes, substantially makes up for that difference in the state funding. So that's, for all those reasons you mentioned, it's reasonable for the city to pay a premium about in this range as part of the joint system.
The second question is about the surplus funds at the end of the year. Since the county provides 90% of the funds, I mean, we have a small dog in this big-dog fight, is that a good way to think about it?
That's true. And this provision is one where the city has been, has been pretty well been pleased over the years to follow the county's lead in the way they think that works best with the schools and for just the reason that you mentioned. So I'm comfortable that this issue will be resolved without difficulty.
Great. Any questions, Paul?
No questions, no.
Any comments?
No, I just thank staff for working on the county with this. Again, another opportunity to continue our relationship. I know people have concerns about the 14% premium for city students, but as the mayor's just pointed out, it helps make up for another funding inequity from the state. And I'm just hopeful that the county will approve it and the county will as well.
Scott?
I've been very impressed with the amount of dialogue between the city and the county on working out the specifics of the new contract. And I'm just, it's very positive going forward, so.
Doug, you were an important part of this negotiation, so what are your thoughts?
I don't know how important a part of it I played, but certainly as a school board, our school liaison member, from my perspective, you know, there was a lot of good faith discussion that happened and very pleased at how clearly the two staffs played an integral part in this and Jack was very good about bringing stuff back to council, as I'm sure Mr. Midol was with the supervisors. I think we've gotten to a point in this contract where there's been some marginal changes, but nothing really radical and nothing that would have a negative impact on the students, which is, this is all really about. So I think the process, you know, operated under good faith and look forward to continuing this relationship for another five years.
Judy?
One of the issues that I read in the paper anyway, that rears its ugly head once in a while, is the proportion of representation on the school board. And it is my understanding that that does not change in this contract.
That's correct. Five county school board members, two city school board members.
One of the things I've been hearing going door-to-door, you probably do this every four years just to find out what people are thinking, is that we don't have enough representation on the school board, even though we only have 10% of the students. So I think it's important to at least maintain our two. So other than that, I think it's, I think it's a fine contract and I do not envy the two of you who had to work.
As Doug said, thank goodness, we have terrific staff. They make us look good. Okay.
So do we need a?
We need to take an action, I believe.
Mr. Phillips, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are we voting to authorize the mayor to sign the contract?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? I would move that city council give you the authority to sign the contract.
Sir? I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pond?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Frye?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Good. And as Paul said, this is one more measure of the cooperation that occurs between the jurisdictions. This is good. Our next order of business is reports. First is the monthly financial statements. Jack, is there anything in particular?
Yes, one thing. If you look on page six, you'll see at the bottom of the page is a summary of the city's long-term debt. And I've got a call on Tuesday from Jimmy Sanderson, who is with Davenport and Company. Davenport and Company has been the city's financial advisor for transactions over at least two decades. And Mr. Sanderson advised that they had been, as they do with all the people they work with, looking to see if there are refunding opportunities in the market that could save the localities' money on existing debt. And we have a fairly small outstanding debt. If you look at item number two, capital improvement, sales tax fund, issued date of 2005, the original issue amount was $8.5 million. On your sheet, it shows 5.6 remaining to go. Actually, another payment has been made as of April 1, and that is now 5.1 million. So just over $5 million outstanding on that 15-year bond issue, has another eight years to run. And as you can see, our current interest rate is 3.76%. 3.76% sounds like a pretty good interest rate, and it certainly was in 2005. However, rates right now are historically incredibly low. And in fact, it may well be possible to refund this $5 million, still over eight years, not adding anything to the length of term, and saving the city something around $20,000, $25,000 per year for the rest of the term, which will, of course, and that is net of the costs of doing a refunding of the issue. So that was interesting enough to me to say to Mr. Sanderson that I would brief you on that today and that, and ask him to, if you concur, to work this up in terms of what the cost would be, what the savings would be, and provide a resolution for you to look at next month to see if you would like to authorize an advanced refunding of this $5 million. And what it would say, the resolution would authorize it so long as the savings and generally the way these things go, were at least 3% of the outstanding cost looking ahead. So there's a floor, so you simply don't want to do it and save a very small amount. But as long as it's sufficient enough and worthwhile, that the authority would be to go ahead and put that together. So again, no action today, but want to let you know that's what's been suggested to me and it sounds promising.
I think that's certainly worth pursuing.
Absolutely. And is whatever the resolution, you talked about the savings having to be 3%, and it takes into account that whatever the circumstances are when the resolution is passed might not be the circumstances.
Yes, yes.
However many months down the road it takes to accomplish it.
Right, and there is, there is a small window of some risk where there are some costs that are incurred, that if you don't go ahead, you still have to pay those costs, but they're relatively minor. And we'll talk about those details next month. So there is some risk in it, but it's modest and the gain, again, is substantial.
Smart.
Can we do it with the other ones?
Well, the other one was the 2010 bonds were, that was done and it now stands at 2.75%.
Right.
And the question, it's all a matter of how much? And we've all been spending money as we're going along, but to the next level, that would, would begin to impact our rates significantly. So, I think the idea of doing the study is a good idea. And it does buy us a little time regardless, but mainly to find out whether a different approach to regional sanitary sewer makes sense, or doesn't make sense. The study is non-binding, it does not, there's nothing going in. In fact, it expressly says, this in no way binds the cities and the counties to any, any particular plan for moving forward. So, it is comprehensive, it's non-binding, but if there were to be further regionalization of sanitary sewer, this would be a first step. So, the question before council is, do you want to adopt a resolution, a resolution saying that you would agree to participate in the study, and knowing that it's not at your cost?
What do you see as the benefits, and what are the downs, potential downsides? I mean, it's, it's, it's not going to bind any locality into taking any action in the future, but it will simply provide. So, what are the downsides? What are the benefits that you see?
Well, I don't, I don't see a downside to doing the study. I think, I think doing the study, it makes good sense. The, the question of further regionalization of the system, there are hundreds of questions in that. And, and I think HRSD itself is an example of a regional entity that has worked very well and very efficiently to the benefit of the entire region. And at the same time, there are other regional ventures which have not worked out very well. And I would use the South Side SIPSA, their Solid Waste Authority, is an example of one that took on too much debt, and the world changed around them, and they would have been better off not having done what they did 25 years ago, under regulatory pressure at the time, from the federal government on solid, solid waste. So, there are examples of very successful regional partnerships, and not so successful ones. Obviously, I think that the goal here would be for the cities and counties of Hampton Roads, that if we move in that direction to ensure that it is a successful partnership, and, and not one that 10 and 20 years later, communities regret.
Any further questions?
I have two of those hundreds of questions, just in the hope that you might be able to help me understand. HRSD owns all of the sewer infrastructure that is the collector pipe, and then the treatment facilities.
Well.
Or, I mean, the big pipe, that?
The big pipe.
All the counties, yeah, I get that. What I'm not so sure about is, the city owns a significant amount of its own infrastructure, but it's a tiny amount, I would think, compared to what is in other localities.
Right.
So, does the study then come up, is, is the plan that the study would also offer recommendations about how to distribute funding appropriately, based upon the infrastructure that's acquired by HRSD?
Well, again, we own assets. In other words, we own the collection system, the gravity lines that feed to some 10, or how many pump stations do we have, Dan?
13.
13 pump stations, that then transmit that to the HRSD forced main, which is under pressure main pumping to the sewage treatment station. So, if HRSD, if this, what regionalization would mean, is that HRSD would acquire those assets from the city. The city then would no longer have, use its personnel to maintain that system. It would become a function of this, of HRSD as a regional entity, and they would need to have offices and personnel throughout that would respond to maintaining the pump stations, improving the lines, and dealing with that phase of the system. And so, we would not, we would be spared that expense, but somebody would have to pay HRSD to do that. So, you would be trading from one place to the other. And there, what makes this so complicated, you have communities such as Williamsburg, we don't even provide a separate sewer fee for our portion, we combine it with our water rate. In most other communities, they have a separate, separate sewer rate that they charge, that they would stop charging that, and HRSD would start charging it. Well, in our case, we don't charge an extra rate. So, what savings would there be to us that would allow us to reduce water rates? And how much would the increase be on the HRSD side for them to pick it up? So, that's the kind of thing that we would be looking at. And then, there's always the problem in something like this, that what if this is good for 80 percent of the communities and not for 20 percent financially? And, and can the 20 percent kill the deal for the 80 percent? I don't know.
And I don't want to get too far down the road, because we haven't even agreed whether or not we want to do the study. But the thing, the, the two aspects of it, well, the other thing that is hard to get my arms around is, then you talk about acquisition of piping on private property.
Maybe yes, maybe no.
Okay, because that starts to get really complex.
That goes, that goes further. But you might have a situation where the, an entity such as HRSD would agree to maintain the piping on the private sector, if the private sector owner would allow them to do it.
Yeah. The thing that, the one part of it that just gives me a little bit of pause, is if another entity was responsible for our pump stations and our sewage pipe infrastructure, if there's a problem, I have great confidence in city staff's ability to respond incredibly quickly and effectively and deal with that. And it's not that I don't have confidence in HRSD, but they're going to be a much bigger, much more spread out, and I just wonder in the long term what that would mean to the effectiveness. But, like I said, I don't want to.
PDOT comes to mind.
That's not fair. But, thank you, those are my questions.
No, no, I think those, those are, and those are only two of the many hundreds. Many, many, many questions, yeah.
So, essentially, by agreeing to this, we're allowing you to even participate in the study? Because I think that's important.
Effectively, because we're, yes, I mean, Dan Clayton is going to be working with this group, and, and providing information, and, and he's already in that. But, but effectively, the, the localities are going to participate in the study, both provide information and monitor it as it goes along. So, that's how it would work.
Very good.
Well, I'm in favor of doing it. I, I think you always should look at things like this, but it is not totally without cost. There's time from staff. So, I mean, that's fine, but.
The, the, there's also time engaged in every locality on its own.
Right.
Responding to the consent order.
Sure.
And what that means, and that's a big time commitment as well.
Sure. Oh, sure. Well, no, I think we need to do this. It's just, we need to be very careful.
This is the first baby step of what could be a very long journey, I think.
Yes, I agree.
And potentially expensive journey. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council approve Resolution 12-04 entitled, Resolution Authorizing Participation in a Study of Further Regionalization of Sanitary Sewer Service and Assets.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Frieling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Our next city manager report is the 2012 Asphalt Overlay Schedule Award Bid.
Yes, Mr. Clayton will give this report.
Mayor, members of council, as we do each year, we went out for bids for our annual asphalt overlay program. And on March 18th, we received two bids from Branscombe Inc. and from Basic Construction. Branscombe's bid was $539,422.80, and Basic's bid was $610,729. The list of the streets we're planning on doing are in your memo there. We have 14 streets. The bids also include pavement markings such as center lines, crosswalks, and stop bars. Just to point out, the bids are based on unit prices, which are multiplied by the quantities that we estimate, based on the length of the road, and the width of the road, and the amount of asphalt we put on the road. And therefore, the actual cost to the city will vary slightly from the bids submitted, since we actually, at the, at the end of the day, after it's all paved, we, we have measurements of the, of the quantities that we used. We have $450,000 in our capital budget for this work, and the remaining $89,000 plus would have to come from the capital contingency fund. The work would be planned to be started in May and be completed by July. And as you can see from the bids there, Branscombe Inc. is the low bidder, and he's well qualified to perform the work, has done it for many years for us. So, basically, we recommend that council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Branscombe in the amount of the $539,422.80.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Any, any questions for Dan?
I have a question, and this might be for Mr. Tuttle, or Mr. Sarah. What's the, the amount that's in the capital contingency fund, and how much is left after the removal of the $89,000?
Right. I believe we, it was $500,000, correct, in the capital contingency?
It's on your green sheets, under the sales tax report. The budget right now is $553,000, and we've spent $48,000 of that, so just over $500,000 is left.
Yeah. We, we budget a substantial amount in that line item, simply so that we don't have to go back and go through a budget reapropriation. But to spend any money out of that, we come back to you to approve it.
And, Mr. Clayton, based upon your experience, and I understand that they're bidding on a unit, and we don't know the number of units until the work is completely done, are we looking at potentially a 5 percent, 10 percent difference?
I'd say on maybe 10 percent. But it could go either way.
Right, right.
Right.
Okay. Scott?
Mr. Tuttle has explained to me that the process for paving and how it relates to these streets that haven't been paved for years, that have the, the pebble look, that was very helpful to me. If we could go through that in public one more time, just to, because I get, get questions about that.
I'll, I'll give a shot, I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about. But the asphalt that we use in our, in our overlay, and it does cost us, is a little bit of a premium, not really too bad, but it's, it comes with the, the, the stone in the asphalt, it's a brownstone asphalt. And that will wear, I think you look at Jamestown Road, most of our streets, a nice brown color. It does take a few years to wear, with, basically based on weather, as opposed to the asphalt you use. So, it's, it's going to be some time, but that, that will show up. So, that's, so we do pay a premium to get that. The other, the other thing that you might be talking about is the, actually, of us putting down tar and gravel on our streets, which we, it's been problematic. Number one, there's not many folks to do that anymore. And we do got a lot of tracking with tar and stuff in the house, and it, it's very temperamental, the weather has to be almost perfect for it to work, because you get a lot of stone, these stones are the round pebbles, and they roll.
Yeah.
They don't stay in place very well. So, we, we've kind of gotten away from that. But we think the asphalt, the brown asphalt, and the brownstone in the asphalt, it works well.
Good deal.
That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you, thanks.
Mr. Clayton, every year, we put money in our, budget money in our CIP for this program. And clearly, that, that money's been, been saved up. How do we determine the schedule for asphalt overlay? Is it years after, a number of years after it's constructed, or?
Well, most of it, it's, we, actually, we go out and look at all of our streets, keep, keep track that way. Also, we figured out that, based on us putting in this much asphalt each year, we can do pretty much all of our streets pretty close to a 12-year period, and that's about what we need to do to, to keep our roads in good shape. Some will go, some of the subdivision streets will last as long as 18, 20 years, and Richmond Road, the higher, you know, higher traffic areas, they might be a little, a little less than that. But at this, at this amount of asphalt on a yearly basis, we can keep our streets in pretty good shape.
Okay. And so, these streets have been, I mean, you've gone out.
Oh, yes.
Your staff's gone out and made a determination that it's time.
We look at how long it's been since we paid them, we also, we, we look at all the streets every year.
Okay.
Before we make the schedule of them.
Good, thank you.
Judy?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Branscombe Incorporated for the 2012 Asphalt Overlay Schedule, based on unit prices in the amount of $539,422.80.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Frieling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Jack. Our next report is the Triangle Taxi Lease of Office Space in the Transportation Center.
Yes, sir. The, the city owns the Williamsburg Transportation Center, and we lease space in that center to people such as Amtrak, and also the, the operator who sells the bus tickets and maintains rental car service there. And there's a small office that, in, in the back on the rental car and bus side, which is available for a taxi cab company if they want to rent that and have an office in, in the transportation center. And for many years, we had, and then it's been vacant for a while. We do have one of our taxi cab operators that would like to rent that space, and it's really available. We have, what, three, four different cab companies in the city, so it's available on a first come, first served basis. And so, the recommendation is that we do that, that we rent the, the, the office to Triangle Taxi. This would be for a monthly lease amount of $400 per month. It would extend over five years, and it would be renewable. In the case, since this is tying up a city piece of property for the length of the lease, it needs to have city council approval, but because it's less than five years, it doesn't require a formal public hearing before you, before you act. So, the recommendation is to, is to lease the space to Triangle Taxi.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Tuttle, the other taxi operators were well aware of this opportunity, and?
Well, we didn't go to each one of them and publicize it. I mean, it's been there, they're aware of it, and as I say, the office had been vacant for some time. And so, as one step forward, we went with that one.
And if we authorize this, and then we get to the end of the five-year period, and there's the opportunity for extension, if another service provider steps up at that point, does the operator who's already in place have some kind of precedent or advantage in that situation?
Right. And I'll defer to Mr. Phillips' memory, if, but as I recall, he does, would have the option of another five years.
First right.
Scott?
Thanks, sir. He already has a business license in the city.
Yes, yeah.
It's nice to have another operator there.
I, I assume the lease has provisions that if, for some reason, they didn't perform or what have you, all, all those things are taken in the lease.
It can be terminated if they don't perform.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay. Thank you. I'll come to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'll recommend that city council authorize the city manager to execute a lease with Edward Erkin, sole proprietor, operating as Triangle Taxi, for the rental of office space in the City of Williamsburg Transportation Center.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Frieling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Our final report is an amendment to the tour guide license requirement proposed ordinance 12-07.
Yes, sir. Last month, city council received a request to amend its tour guide licensing requirements to permit high school students who are at least of age of 16 years of age to, to get a license to operate as a tour guide in the city. Right now, the, the code requires that you must be at least 18 years of age. So, you, you asked the staff to take a look at that, and city attorney's office, and as well as the police department who administers this provision, looked at it pretty closely. And the recommendation is that the ordinance be changed to allow a high school student of 16 years of age to become a tour guide operator in the city. However, they have to be first full-time student, if not already having graduated, meet all the requirements that we have for tour guide operators, plus some additional requirements. One is that they be employed by one of the licensed tour companies that are currently in operation. So, we wouldn't have someone independently come in. They need to be under the wing, so to speak, of a, of a licensed tour guide company. And as was suggested in the recommendation, we had that a, a minimum of 20 hours of field training be completed with the tour company that they are, that they would join, in addition to the requirements of the city testing that they would do, as any tour guide operator would, would do. And recognizing that the particular concern is, most of these tours take place in the evening, and they're often after dark, and so, the, and for that reason, and other reasons, the, the idea that this, that this younger tour guide would be under the supervision of, of the tour company, that a plan for how that would actually operate, and, and how the company would work with the younger tour guide, and to be in a, in a situation that we could feel comfortable, is safe, and, and properly supervised, that they would give us that plan, and it could be reviewed, and if it were reasonable, that it would meet the requirement. And, and in that case, that, that person could be licensed.
Thank you. Any, any questions?
Just one question.
to ensure a certain minimum level of qualification of tour provider...
Right.
So that we knew that people coming to Williamsburg and spending their money were at least getting a reasonable, should have a reasonable expectation of accurate information being conveyed during the tour.
Yes, sir.
If we did not have that licensing in place, that's the only place where the 18 comes in...
Correct.
On this. So if we had, if the city had not put that step in place to make sure that we were, that the local tour operators were at least operating at a certain standard, this wouldn't even be an issue.
That's true.
So we're not lowering the working age or changing it, we're just providing flexibility so that more well-qualified tour operator candidates can have access to these jobs.
True.
Okay, thank you.
Just glad we made this work.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council adopt proposed ordinance 12-07.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Cunn?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
I think I see Ms. Granger in the back. Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention, and I hope this meets your needs, and I think it will, and I think I look forward to having you employed in the city. Thank you. Okay. Next order of business, City Attorney reports. Joe, it's nice to see you sitting in that chair. Okay. Any unfinished business? I don't know of any. Any new business to come before the city?
I have just one thing. As I said before, you ought to go door-to-door once in a while. I ran into a concern, and I don't know if it's Mr. Clayton or the city at all concerned, but somebody was talking to me about the difficulty of reaching a bus stop when it's, when you're on the wrong side of Richmond Road. And is there any possibility of putting some kind of marking or pavement on Richmond Road by the bus stop, so you can get across Richmond Road in some kind of reasonable fashion? And I, again, I don't know if that's VDOT, us...
Well, if it's in the city, it is us.
It's in the city.
And the question was, the question of a crosswalk at the location of the bus stop?
Right.
Well, particularly on Richmond Road and that section from bypass outs, we're very sensitive about where crosswalks go.
Oh, I understand.
We prefer to have them wherever there are traffic signals, although we do have one that is, has a kind of a haven island that does not have a traffic signal. But I don't think we'd be able to put a crosswalk at each bus location, so there...
Well, the concern is people trying to get across Richmond Road to get to the bus stop.
Well, I understand. The problem with, when you put a crosswalk in, it gives the pedestrian the right of way in that crosswalk.
Oh, yeah.
So you want to make sure when you put one in, you're not creating a situation that actually is more dangerous for the pedestrian than not having a crosswalk. But in any event, people should be crossing at signals and at corners, and I understand that when there's a good distance to the next crosswalk or next corner, that people will take the shortcut and go across. But at least, it's actually better for them to do that and know that they are at risk, rather than putting a crosswalk in at a place where they, would give them a sense of safety that doesn't exist, so. But I think the other thing we would say is that we have, we added a crosswalk near the bus stop location in front of Williamsburg Shopping Center about two years ago now, at the request of business and some interest there. So if there are specific locations that people want us to look at, we will always look at them.
This is actually Claiborne Patriots Plaza out there. So there are stores, there are people who live there, there are restaurants.
And that's where you're into the true divided highway section...
Oh, absolutely.
With the landscape medians and all of that, and higher speeds, as I recall, too.
Yeah, and the, yeah, it's 40, 35 up there.
Yeah, it's, it comes down to 45 to 35, and then, so I don't think we're going to want to do that.
You know, I wonder if there's an opportunity to coordinate where the bus stops actually are, maybe closer to existing crosswalks or closer, you probably don't want a bus stop at a traffic light, you know, for some...
That closer, yeah.
Maybe there's not too much coordination.
That might be worth having Jody take, who's our representative to, what?
See about the location.
See about location, yeah. Are there, Jody's sitting right there, I could be talking to you. Weather, particularly in that area, because there are some traffic lights, there will be one, is there one at Waltz Farm now?
No.
And there's one a little bit further out, but sort of whether, where the bus stops are relative to the stoplights might be worth looking at. That's a good idea.
Well, what happens is, as we get more people out there, you get people darting across the road all the time, and that's what this particular person was quite worried about.
Well, it could affect the warrants at Waltz Farm Drive and, which, let's see, Dan, do you recall exactly, we don't yet have warrants at Waltz Farm?
No, no, sir.
And that has been studied several times. So this could be an issue that might be, come into play in meeting the state VDOT level, even though that's city, it's got to meet the VDOT level warrants to put in a traffic light. That's one of three or four intersections in the city that have been identified as potential traffic light spots, but haven't yet met warrants with sufficient amount of side traffic and the other conditions that would warrant the signal.
Well, I'm not wild about more traffic lights on that road. On the other hand, we don't want anybody getting killed going across the road here.
Yeah, of course, this location is even further out from that, isn't it?
It is, it is. It's right out on the edge of the city.
Right.
So, yeah, anyway, just wanted to mention.
We'll take a look. Okay. Any other new business? If not, that brings us to our final agenda item for the day, which is open forum. As a time for anyone who wishes to address council on any issue to do so. If you wish to address council on any issue, please come forward and state your name. If not, do we have any action for closed session today?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, yes.
Hello, I'm back. I'm Gabrielle Granger, and I just wanted to come up and say thank you all very much for considering the proposal regarding tour guides licensing, and I just wanted to thank you very much for allowing me this amazing opportunity.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Yeah, good luck. Thank you. No closed session items?
Yes, sir.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.